Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.9 is the revised alignment for the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project Phase MI5. The revised suggested alignment for the MI5 phase of the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project is going to be presented to us tonight for possible consideration and possible approval. We have Tractor Jonison, who's also part of the Suris River Joint Board, as well as some engineering help. Good evening.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, like you said, we have a presentation for you tonight. As you recall, back on January 21st, we brought you revised alignment for MI5. That went out for public input. We had a good turnout on that. And tonight, Mr. Benz, Jerry Benz, is back with Houston Engineering. They're the design firm for this phase to give you a brief update on our findings of that and why we're recommending the council move ahead with this revised alignment. Mr. Ackerman, our administrator for the joint board is also here, so if there's any questions we can answer after Mr. Benz's presentation, we'd be happy to take them.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to present again on behalf of the Suris River Joint Board. I'll keep this relatively brief. We'll do just a little recap as far as what we went through at the January meeting, talk about the public outreach that we've done since that time, and also to cover any, some small modifications that we've made to that plan, and then ultimately give you a little update on the path forward and then open it up for questions at the end. So for the public, certainly, members of this body are aware of it, with the pending flood plain and existing flood risk, the Suris River Joint Board has been working fairly diligently on stringing together reaches of flood protection along the north side of the river. So on this map just shows the existing projects that are completed, as well as those that are ongoing in phases one, two, and three on the north side, as well as the work that was done on Highway 83 and Broadway when those improvements were done. Those reaches, what we're looking to do is to couple those with the reaches that are currently under design in Terracito of La Joa, the Maple Diversion, and then importantly, on the east end, MI5 or the northeast tieback. The reason that the northeast tieback and the other phases are so important is that with the stringing together of those project reaches, we will be able to successfully remove the pending flood plain from the north side of the river. So as we look at the MI5 area and reach, certainly, it's a little different portion of Minot from the standpoint of how it survived during the 2011 flood event. So just an aerial imagery showing the flood of 2011. So this neighborhood with Broadway kind of just left of center, Third Street crossing near the center of the slide, and you can see the protection that was put in place. Really, one of the largest areas, I guess, in the valley that was protected successfully. That was done through some pretty heroic measures, building earthen levees out along Railway Avenue, essentially out east of 13th Street to tie into the high ground on the east side of the community. So I show these because they were important. As the Suris River Joint Board started to look at options in this area, we looked at a wide variety of alignments. Definitely early in the process, impacts to existing property was one of the largest items that we were trying to avoid. So as we looked at various alignments, we had came with a solution. We showed that to you at the January meeting, which was going to pull that protection to the south side across the railroad tracks with a couple of crossings there. We subsequently ran into some hurdles, permitting hurdles, and approval issues with BNSF. So we went back to the drawing board. And at the January meeting, we presented this revised concept that was our preferred alignment at that point, all things considered. This alignment would keep the flood protection north of the railroad tracks or the railroad yard. It would essentially tie into the MI1 project that's currently being constructed, extend that flood wall out to the east along the north side of the rail yard, requiring us to relocate Railway Avenue to the north of where it is, very similar to what was done but or is ongoing between Broadway and Third Street. Then on the east end, as we get far enough out to the east, we would switch to a levee system out on the east end, just because with the impacts to properties that would be required from moving the protection to the north side, it gives us a little more room there without having to acquire more properties and becomes a little more cost-efficient by switching to a levee on the far east end versus a flood wall. So we talked about that plan on the north side, on the south side of the rail yard, in the area that the acquisitions are ongoing. That area would turn into essentially a floodway or a greenway space on the south side of the rail yard as part of the project in order to address pedestrian transversing through the area. We would upgrade the pedestrian underpass under the railroad bridge on the Mouse River. And ultimately, I guess, we're proposing to remove the pedestrian overpass that exists on the railroad that you can see on the picture in the upper right. Unfortunately, the downside, and definitely something we were trying to avoid in those early options, was that this option, as compared to others, does require additional home acquisitions on the north side of rail, of the rail yard that we were initially trying to avoid. All in, we're expecting that to be about 15 residential properties and seven businesses on the north side. And we presented back in January an estimated project cost, total project cost of about $75 million. So after doing the public meeting in January with this body, we held a public outreach meeting with members of the community. In early February, I think we had real good attendance there. Approximately 100 people attended. We had an open house early in the session, followed by a presentation, and then again, opened it up afterwards. A lot of good communication with area residents. We did at that point require that any comments be provided in writing. We did, following the meeting, get nine comments. I believe that those were included in your packet for this evening. In addition to that public meeting, we did several follow-up individual, one-on-one meetings with residents that had contacted our public relations staff. We went out in the field, met with them, heard their concerns, and ultimately made some minor adjustments, and I'll show you those on the next two slides. So the map here shows what was presented to this body in January and also what was presented to the public at the February 10th meeting. As far as alignment comments, we really had alignment comments essentially in two areas. One was on the far east end of the proposed project. You can see the property that's right on the far right of the screen, on the outside of the levee protection. The property owner there asked about potential to sort of move the alignment and be a little further away from his property to reduce impacts. And if I flip back and forth here, what you'll see is what was presented at the public meeting end of this body. We actually were proposing to start the road raise a little further to the east to keep the levee to the east with the properties that are, the same number of acquisitions, we're actually able to pull that road raise back to the west a little further and provide that owner with some additional space there that I think they felt is very beneficial. On the left side of the page, there too, we had a property owner that just had some concerns about how the alley was going to be reconstructed and the intersection between the alley going to the north and the roadway coming in from the south there through what currently is the Suris River Design Property. Again, we were able to, and I'll flip back and forth, so on the left side of the screen, you can see the changes. They're relatively minor changes, no additional acquisitions as a result of them, but I think we can address some of the residents' concerns a little better with those adjustments. So with that, this is the current alignment that we're bringing forward. I put up the same path forward slide that we talked about back in January. So at that time, we came to you as a informational meeting. We did the public outreach. Ultimately, I guess, we're back here tonight requesting from this body to approve the protection being on the north side of the BNSF railroad line and to forward that recommendation to the Suris River Joint Board. Assuming that that happens, we would take this up as well with the joint board at their meeting on Thursday. And assuming that they adopt alignment at that point, we would move from the conceptual design into the actual full-blown 60%, 90% design with the idea that we get to construction as early as probably 2021. So with that, I will pause and certainly take any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the hard work that went into that, as well as the public input meeting where you, the SRJB and staff, were available for public input. I certainly understand it was not an easy meeting to present this information. Just a quick question before I open it up here. As far as if this is not approved, what kind of delay would we be looking at in terms of not only MI5, but essentially that 65%? If you could ballpark.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure they have a great answer for you on that. If we don't move to the north side alignment, we really fall back into the plan that we had developed previously that crossed the tracks at the two locations with BN. We're really at a stalemate with them on that plan. They're not accepting of it. They did offer an alternative plan that I showed at the January meeting that would have resulted in considerable raise to the rail lines, as well as replacement of the Third Street Bridge and their bridge. That was a considerably more expensive project. I'm going from memory, but I think that was about $129 million versus the estimated $75 million. So from a timeline standpoint, I don't know that I have a real good answer because those decisions are outside of, really, outside of our control.
Tremendous amount more time and even more money. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Further questions? Alderman Pittner, I think you had your hand up.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Benz, again, appreciate the hard work, and I appreciate you guys reaching out to citizens and doing all the outreach. It stuck out to me about 15 homes with constructing a flood wall. Was an earthen dike considered? And/or, and maybe a second part of that question, how many homes would have to be acquired to do that? Or did you guys just say, no, that's more acquisitions we're going to nix that from the get-go?
Yeah. Mayor Alderman Pittner, we did look at a levee along the entire reach, and really, I think you can visualize it pretty well if you look at the slide that I have on the screen right now. You know, switching to a levee there becomes a lot wider footprint. So with the wider footprint, we would have had to push the road even further to the north, and we would have ended up having to acquire at least one more row of homes, if not two in some areas. So the social impacts would be much greater with that. We also did some very early cost estimating, and from an economic standpoint, there wasn't really any cost savings because the less expensive levee was offset by additional costs to acquire more homes. So we really feel like this provides an equal project at a relatively equal cost with less social impacts.
Alderman Wolski?
Mayor Setma, thanks. A couple initial comments here on process. One, I feel like our process has been evolving and improving along the way. I want to offer a comment to keep us improving, which is, when we have comments coming in from the public, and I'm glad to see them here tonight, I would also like to see our responses to them. I want some assurance that these folks have had their questions answered. Now, it sounds like you guys have dealt with that largely in person, which is great. But I think it's, you know, when there's information presented to us regarding a very difficult decision like this, I think the community needs to see in writing how we have treated some of these very significant and, I think, appropriate and, you know, germane comments to the larger project. Jerry, I want to challenge an assumption that seems to be built into the current preferred alignment. And I want to try and figure out where it came from, because if asked my opinion on this particular assumption, I would probably choose differently than the project seems to have assumed, which is, why do we have to keep railway open during a flood fight event? And could we split Railway Avenue in two and put the wall right down the middle and not have to buy out properties?
Mayor Setma, Alderman Wolski, probably, I'll slide back to one slide that may be getting you to where you're at there, Alderman Wolski. So the image here is where the levee would sit in the upper, or I'm sorry, the flood wall would sit in the upper right relative to the existing street corridor. So things I think that you have to keep in mind a little bit in doing this is the image in the lower right is essentially what that flood wall looks like. So although we see just the line going down the middle, beneath that is also the footing, which is generally in this project going to be somewhere in the 30 to 40-foot-wide footing down there. So in order to get that flood wall footing in the ground, we've also got a series of public utilities that run along there. So we've got waters, sewer, a forest main that runs through that area that also has to fit in that street corridor. So although our drawings definitely don't show that in detail, adjacent to the flood wall, we've also got these other public utilities that have to fit in there. And if we were to run the flood wall down the center of the street, the footing's going to really eat up a lot of that room for the utility corridor that I think would cause us trouble and ultimately result in us having to move that utility corridor to the north and acquire the homes anyways. So I just think that's something that's maybe you don't see when you look at it, is all of the utilities. There's, through some of the stretch, there's, well, through some of the stretch, there's up to four different utilities running under the street through there, because we have water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and we have also got the valley forest main that leads out to the lagoons running through this corridor. So there's lots of things underground that people don't see.
Those are my questions. Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Benz, the question has been raised before, and I've heard the response, but I think the public is curious. Why don't we claim eminent domain on the railroad?
With that one, Mayor, and Alderman Straight, I'm going to defer to the administrator for the Suris River Joint Board to answer that question.
Good evening, Mr. Ackerman.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the easy ones. I guess the question regarding eminent domain, I'm not going to get into specifics on this. If you guys would like to, we can go into some sort of a privileged or executive session where I can share opinions from our attorney on this, but because we're in ongoing discussions and negotiation with BNSF, I'm going to keep it pretty high level. We, the public, do have the authority to condemn property for public uses. However, the railroads also serve a public use, and that use is interstate commerce. Okay? So Congress has granted the railroads incredible and vast authority with regard to condemnation rights as well. So it is entirely conceivable that we could go to court, we could condemn the railroad, the railroad can come back and condemn us. So it's a complex question. The answer is not simple. It is something that we did consider, though. Ultimately, we feel like the path forward is the one that Mr. Benz has laid out for you.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ackerman, Mr. Benz, we've had these conversations for a couple of years, so I've asked these questions. I just think it's important that the public hear them. One other question I want to ask, because I'm very mindful of my hypocrisy sitting up here tonight. I'm mindful of what I approved earlier tonight in terms of eminent domain. I'm very mindful of having a principled opinion that you feel is not just principled, but also representative of the people you represent. And so I want to ask one question, just because I took the time, I wanted to meet with a BNSF official. Do you both feel that over the spectrum of these last number of years, that they have been operating in good faith, as we have spent considerable time, considerable resources, that were they clear at the beginning, like, we're not going to participate? Or were they participating, I think, large part what I've been told, what we've been told, thanks to Senator Hovin's office? I'm just curious of an opinion on that, because I'm going to frame out my future remarks somewhat based on that.
Mayor Setma, Alderman Straight. I guess, maybe to frame this a little bit differently, if BNSF were to choose to not operate in good faith, I don't think they would have committed the staff resources to have kind of endless conversations with us over the last almost two years about this particular project. I think the project that is framed out in the build grant, as they evaluated it, they felt like their appropriate investment level was $2 million. From an economics standpoint for the flood control project, that doesn't make sense, because we have another alternative that's available to us that is, you know, $50 million cheaper. So that's really why we're back talking to you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one more.
Any further questions?
I have one more comment.
Okay.
Just in lieu of that comment, it's incredibly important that the public be aware, because we're talking about a $30 million kind of change order, well, four to five million in additional costs. There's an additional time and the delay and the engineering costs that Houston Engineering has, we, the taxpayers, have paid for it. And I think that as we are stewards of dollars moving forward with how we deal with the railroad, we have to be incredibly mindful of that fact. Are we not just floating tonight on taking people's additional homes and the businesses? But we've also lost the time. We've lost the dollars. And I think moving forward, and I'm well aware that, you know, my family and those of us on the east, we're in future phases. But I think I just want to make that known, that we have to be sure moving forward that we are spending dollars, we are designing at a level, I trust you both incredibly well. I am by no means trying to disparage you or the joint board, but when it comes to millions of dollars on the line and homes and realities, Jerry, I heard you say social impacts, we have to point these things out. And it is true that BN found a value of $2 million for a project that was going to cost $128 million. We've also lost additional couple million dollars probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, probably in the design of this project of this particular phase, by them ultimately finding that this isn't of value to them. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm struggling with my principled opinion versus what I feel is in the best interest of this community, without seeming like I'm a bigger hypocrite when I vote on this. So I just want to state those realities, because I take it seriously.
Any further questions for Mr. Benz? As always, again, we appreciate the hard work that he's gone into this and understand that his noisy task, going through with design, understanding social impacts, and doing the best to limit those and minimize them. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I appreciate all the comments, I appreciate all the hard work, but I also want to be mindful that when we talk about the route, we're talking about an entity that maybe the city of Minot is not here unless the railroad exists. I mean, they've been a huge driver in our economy. This is a community partner that we may have to work with on future projects going forward. And I remember Alderman Straight has expressed that he's met with BN officials in Minneapolis before, and they were aware of some of the comments that were made. And so they are mindful, they are watching. That is their asset, the railroad, that is, those are their lines. They put a value on how it benefits them, and I have, as much as I don't like the answer, I don't mind it. That's their right as an entity. That's their asset. I'm not going to tell someone how to run their business. I'm not going to be mad that they feel that they'll be fine in a flood event. That's their choice. Maybe they'll think differently if it happens again, but I just don't want, and I can appreciate Alderman Straight's frustrations, I can, but as hopeful as we may have been that they would have contributed more, they didn't. So again, I take a little bit of a different look at it, that it's unfortunate, but this is the hand that we're dealt, and this is how we have to move going forward. I don't want to sit there and bash someone that's provided a lot to our community and to our economy locally. I was provided, actually, a pretty good upbringing from my father working on the railroad, and my brother works on the railroad. So by no means am I a cheerleader or a critic. I just, I want us to be mindful that these are community partners that we sit up here and bash, that, again, we may have to sit across from the table on a future endeavor, and I don't want to burn any bridges with community partners. So again, I don't like the answer, but I understand it. And it's not a fun reality, it's not a great reality, but that's the value they put on it, benefiting them as an entity, and I accept that. And I hope to work with the railroad in future endeavors, whether it be on this project or another, but again, I don't feel it's in the best interest of this community to sit up here and criticize so heavily some entity that's been a huge asset to this community in the past. But I appreciate and I respect the feelings of fellow Aldermen.
One small correction. It's, rather than code its will, we do have to work with them on some other bridge crossings, as well as other projects. So further discussion before and/or if there is a motion? Alderman Janzer?
I guess I would move that we accept the revised alignment or approve the revised alignment as presented.
We've motioned to approve the MI5 phase consideration.
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolski?
Mayor Setma, thank you. Kind of a continuation of some of the discussion previously, but with regards to the railroad, Alderman Pittner used the hand that were dealt metaphor. I had also written down sort of the same card playing metaphor, and I do not blame BNSF for their position. We all play the hand that we are dealt, and in this particular arena, we are kind of the local government David to the interstate commerce Goliath. I mean, this is just the reality of our circumstance, and I, they have every right to exercise their position and use the system as it exists the way they see best fit for their organization. My hope is that in working through this process and this design and future designs, we can continue to stay at the table and have a partnership. And my hope is, and frankly, on this motion tonight, I'm not prepared to support it, because I would like to see our design team take one more crack at keeping that flood wall in the place of the existing Railway Avenue and potentially limiting access to Railway Avenue during a flood event. I think there's possibly, I would like one more crack at exploring an easement on the south side of Railway Avenue to potentially accommodate some of that underground footprint. That would certainly be a construction disruption for the railroad, but as I see that area, I think there is an operational, there is a construction disruption, but operationally after the fact, I'm not sure that it's a real significant thing to have a flood wall with a footing that's underneath tracks and a flood, and the larger main portion of the wall essentially on what would be the south edge of Railway Avenue. These are questions of tens of feet. There's a lot of nuance in my hope. And I understand that when it finally comes down to it, there may be no alternative but what's in front of us tonight. But I want one more look at this, at the alignment of Railway Avenue, at alignments that allow us to put a wall in the middle of that road and slow down traffic and just keep the cars right where they're at, and put a flood wall potentially in the middle or potentially on the south side of that. So that's my comments on the particular alignment. And I'm going to stop right there. I have some other comments that I am going to prepare for the Suris River Joint Board, but I think I'm going to leave them offline for now.
Further discussion on the motion to accept and adopt the MI5 re-alignment. Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have to say, as I attended the Roosevelt meeting, and I mean no disrespect to Mr. Benz or to Otney, Mr. Mayor, I think you and I in particular, we've attended at least four or five bio meetings maybe in the last number of years, and I think we need to allow the public a chance to vent at those meetings and not just take written comment. That's, moving forward, sir, I would hope that you- That's, moving forward, sir, I would hope that you would keep that in mind. A second point to Alderman Pittner's point, I agree. I've never once refuted, I recognize the power of the railroad, but when we are elected to represent the pupil of this community and the financial decisions, I think what we have seen, and there's growing animosity, I think, in this country when you have entities and people that have extreme wealth that can do what they want. And I think our role in some respects is to stand up for people that can't necessarily stand up for themselves. And to Alderman Wolski's point earlier tonight at that meeting, I, it's the worst part of this job. So I'll shut up, Mr. Mayor, because I can't talk anymore.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if Mr. Benz or Mr. Ackerman could maybe speak to Alderman Wolski's possible request to take another crack, if they feel that's appropriate, not to say that you guys haven't vetted all of the options, or what kind of delay that would instill to look at a project like that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, Alderman Wolski, I think it's something that we can definitely take a look at. We'll consider, you know, a comment, and we're going to address that comment. So we will take a look at it and get back to you.
For clarification, we're still on the motion for adopting the MI-5 re-alignment as presented tonight. Alderman Wolski?
I'm not quite done, but my comments are not going to be controversial. But I do want to highlight the fact that one thing that's changed from the alignment that we were presented with in May of 2018, which initially had a track crossing just to the east of the river and then a second track crossing further to the east, one thing that's changed is we are no longer crossing the tracks. BNSF, that's a benefit to the railroad in terms of what we are contemplating tonight as an option versus what we had previously contemplated. Now, it's maybe not as much of a benefit as the rebuild the Third Street Viaduct and raise the tracks and rebuild the railroad bridge version, but it's my belief and assumption that the railroad is going to be an economic beneficiary of our flood protection plan. And as we talk about our partnerships with them in the future, I want to encourage our team to don't be shy and don't hesitate to talk about the benefit of this project to BNSF. Because I think, you know, given the circumstances of the project, we're delivering real tangible economic dollars and cents that are coming to that organization by keeping this project on the north side of the tracks. And I think it would be helpful to understand those benefits that are being provided and so we can make that case as we seek them and invite them to be a partner in not only MI-5, but all our future phases.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Again, the motion is to accept and adopt the MI-5 re-alignment as presented tonight. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padraigola?
Yes.
Straight?
No.
Wolski?
No.
Setma?
Yes.